The leaders of the United States of America and to the majority of which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father and our God is once again where we come. Almost may I let everyone know how to give a bow and ask, "Oh, thank you, God, for another day. Thank you, God, for life, health, and strength. And, God, we thank you for allowing us to send this afternoon to Hama County Building, this first regular county building meeting of the new year 2016. And, God, we ask that you help us to do what's right for Dillon County and help us, God, to be able to not become disagreeable, God, to be able to disagree but not become disagreeable. Fall out with one another because we know each and everyone here have their own mind and have their own way of doing things and where they want Dillon County to go. And, God, we ask that you bless Dillon County citizens, each and everyone. Bless everyone here in your name, and these are all the prayers. Amen.
We're down to number three now for approval of agenda. Do we have a motion to approve this then?
I'll make that motion.
Is that good? Any discussion? I'm the favorite right now. Down to number four, approval of minutes of 12:09 and 15:00. One, six, six, and the call meeting. Do we have a motion to approve this minute?
Make it.
Is that good?
I'll say it.
Any discussion? I'm the favorite right now. We're down to number five, new business. Dillon County Accommodation Tax Report, 2014 and 2015.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask Mr. Berry if he would like to speak because I know they made a request to Bob Newton's group here who's over there. I think Mr. Berry would like to make a recommendation fix his the final outcome on the accommodation taxes basically up in Dillon.
My name is Gerald Berry. I'm chairman of the Dillon Historic School Foundation, and I want to thank you very much for including our organization on this month's agenda. And I have two reasons for being here today, and I'm going to respect the time limit. I'm very respectful of your time and what you have to do here today. But I have two reasons for being here. One is to introduce you to the Dillon Historic School Foundation and its goals and objectives. And two, to share with you, each one of you, the itemized report that the Dillon Historic School Foundation has presented to the Dillon County Accommodations Tax Committee. First of all, I'd like to give each one of you a packet that includes a copy of our brochure for the Dillon Historic School Foundation. This will be inside your packet with photographs of the auditorium as it exists at this time. And also in the packet, you will find three picture postcards of the auditorium. You will find a business card. And inside this packet, you should learn exactly what our philosophy is and what our plans are for this site, this historic site. I want you to have that. If you can look at that, then we'll put your job here for your own time. And I'd also like to give you a copy of our proposal. I think Ms. Miller has that. Can you pass that up? That's a copy, an itemized copy of the request we've made of the Accommodations Tax Committee. And inside the envelope tells you what we're all about. And on that handout you're getting right now tells you what we're asking in order to help us with our project, to realize this dream we have. And so if you would just look, you can look over that right now. We only have a few minutes left. You can look over that right now. You can also look inside the packet to see what I've included. The photographs of the old building. And then there's an enhanced copy. There should be two enhanced copies of what we're planning to have that building looking like we're able to get this project underway. Give you some time to look at that. If you have any questions about any of that, either I will answer it or one of these members from the Historic Foundation, School Historic Foundation will hopefully volunteer to answer the question. If there are any questions about the foundation or about your requests. Is there anything you'd like to say to any members who came with me today?
We think we can help the county if we want to get this auditorium going. We think that this will be a plus for our county as it was in the old days when it was in full swing with entertainment and so forth.
Inside the folder, you'll see some of the things that we've listed that we hope to be able to accomplish. So everything that we stand for, that we believe in, is inside the folder.
Excuse me, sir.
Yes, sir.
This auditorium, when y'all get it completed, it's going to be open to jump public.
Yes.
So they'll have access.
Yes, right here.
How y'all going to do it?
Excuse me?
Someone who want to use it, will they have access to release it right now?
Oh, yes. It will be open to everyone, to unlock its doors and open them to everyone.
What's your total cost as you're looking at to revitalize that auditorium?
Outside of this?
Your total, when you get complete with it?
We have one estimate from the architect in Florence, which was dated when?
2010.
2010, and that total was?
It's over a million.
Which we're going to apply for grants. That's the basic way we're going to try to get the money to do this project, through grants. And we're working on that now with the help of Mr. Brady Sampson.
One thing that kind of concerned me, this money, you know, it's got to be tourist related. And I don't understand, y'all qualify, you know, how you can market this, you know, to tourists. Only you come to us and tell us what you know.
Yeah, well, all the things that we've discussed as far as being a cultural arts center, we'll schedule events there that would pull people into the area more so than some of the other things, other activities that are going on in the county. And we would have, we would hope to have, what? Help me here.
Well...
No, at UNC Pembroke, at the Gibbons Performing Arts Center, they rent that out. They, like, insurance groups come in and they meet there. They go to that site and they meet there for like a weekend workshop or whatever. We would have civic organizations, anything that would represent the culture of the city, be it church groups, civic groups, anything. We're looking for the, when we think about a cultural arts center, we think about every piece of the pie which defines the culture of this community. The people, the organizations, the civic clubs, the schools, the churches, whatever. And we want to reach out around the community, the PD and southeastern North Carolina. And we do know there are two other venues in the county, Dillon County Theater and the Ellis Performing Arts Center. We've been asked this question before. Each one of those venues has a totally different setup. Each one has its own advantages and disadvantages. Some are too small for some events. This one may be too big for some events. So we plan to, like, create a board of members, representatives from each one of those three venues and sit down and plan a whole year's schedule for things happening in Latta, the Dillon County Theater, and the auditorium, which seats over 1,000 people. And the only other facility in this area that seats that many, not the civic center, that's something different, is Gibbons Performing Arts Center in Pembroke. It seats 1,600.
Think you have a comment right here?
The, we've also talked about using the gym for basketball tournaments, volleyball tournaments. AAU is really big and brings in a lot of money. That's another tourist issue right there. And in fact, that part of the building, it could probably be cleaned up fairly, you know, easily and used. There are a lot of issues that go with it, but that's one of the, another thing that would bring in tourists was the gym. And, you know, working with the other schools, the AAU tournaments, they have sometimes 120 teams at a tournament. In fact, I worked at one several years at UNC Chapel Hill, and they use NC State, Duke, and Carolina, and some high schools. So, you know, that, it's small, but it would be an opportunity.
And it's not only for athletic events. Gymnasium, we use to think of athletic events. That would be a nice smaller venue for things like gospel singing. I talked about bringing the Halloween singers in from Charleston. And it depends on what size audience you expect. That gym could be used for a variety of activities, not only athletics, but it could be a small, a small performance center or meetings center.
I mean, I had a little information I gave. So how much money are y'all asking for this year? And how much of the accommodation tax money, which is not, you know, so much and it would will be allocated already?
The amount of request on this one is $20,000, and that doesn't cover, just, these are basic things. These are basic things to secure the building, to correct some of the, some of the issues like leaks, closing the windows, fixing the doors, sealing the perimeter, okay? But that, the $20,000 is at the top. But Ms. Miller and writing this account, creating this account, her total was, for weatherproofing and security, $26,000. We're asking for $20,000, and she's added some other things to it. That's an overall thing, but what we're asking for is $20,000.
What would be your take on this, Clay, as far as doing it? You define it, man.
Y'all, the council, whatever, you want to do.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to insert something here. For years, Dillon County Accommodation Tax have always supported the Criterion Club. And I'm surprised that I don't see them here because everything this gentleman spoke about, because we don't have, we have limited space in Dillon County to have events, a dance act. The Criterion Club has that going on. They have civic groups meet there. Criterion Club have gospel singing and stuff like that there. And they've just been a tremendous help in over the years. They have been included in this accommodation tax. But I look at the document here, and I just don't see them being included anywhere.
I can answer that.
And Bob can answer, Bob.
I can answer that. For several years, they contributed to the Criterion Club. Then the accommodation tax law changed where a state oversight committee was on. The state oversight committee saw our report and determined that the Criterion Club is a local club and did not qualify for accommodation tax at that time. So that's when we, we didn't allocate any money to the Criterion Club.
I would respectfully ask them to go back and reconsider because this gentleman here just talked about, and you said it had to be towards tourism. And this gentleman here just named some things that the Criterion Club does. And based off, if the Historic Society, if they are qualified, certainly the Criterion Club, you know, does civic groups. They do church groups. They do gospel singing. People come in, they have gatherings. And the size of the Criterion Club, they travel from far and near. And really, it's one of the only places that, because of the school being closed down, that people could gather.
We have to be careful with the oversight committee because if we, if we make an advisory committee make a recommendation and y'all accept it and you pay out the money, then a annual report goes in after that. Oversight Committee decides, no, that doesn't qualify. And we have to ask for that money back, or the next year, they withhold it from us. Now, with the foundation, the advisory committee, the county advisory committee, determined that the marker qualified for accommodation tax. We weren't sure that the other items did at this point in their, in their progress. We, Clay and I sent the information up to a staff member for the oversight committee. A staff member could, could give us a definitive answer at the time. So what I would like to do is, they're going to meet in the February. Is send to the staff member our recommendation. Ask her to take it to the oversight, get their approval prior to y'all committing those funds. But we could, we're getting funds every quarter, so we can come back to council and ask for money after, after we get a decision from the oversight committee, if that's okay with y'all.
I'd like, certainly, I'd like to see that done. And maybe contact someone from the Criterion Club too and keep them abreast of what's going on. Because I could say, again, you know, certainly this Historic Society qualifies with tourism and gatherings and stuff like that. The Criterion Club has been doing this a number of years.
Well, basically, I'll make sure he got it.
Absolutely, and it's been that a number of years.
But then he understood the problem and it was, it wasn't a question. With the, with the foundation, we had, the foundation came to the advisory committee and made this deposit. And at first, we considered giving them $500 toward the historical marker. Didn't realize that historical marker costs $2,010. So once we did that and found out that maybe, or maybe not, it qualifies, we, we increased that amount to $1,500. Now, with any project that comes to us, we have to make sure. We got 16 projects that we're funding, and we have to split the money up. And $1,500 would have been the max that we can recommend to county council. Now, under the law, county council takes our recommendation and they can do whatever they want to do. So that's how we came about.
Concerning the marker, that marker was bought and paid for long ago.
What did you say, the president?
It was in their proposal.
The president said, hey, this is, this organization with David Martin, this historic organization, whatever. Well, that qualifies as what you're saying.
I didn't, I didn't.
She's asking you, will it qualify as a historic organization?
Will they qualify?
Do they qualify for the funding?
We don't know that yet. We hadn't gotten an answer from those.
Bob, what you think before we pass it, the council passes it? What you think you might need to carry back, get some more information, what we clear on and not clear on? Once we pass it, do that, it'd be harder to come back and turn it around.
No, well, there's more funds available.
I understand, but we need to work on these we already got.
Well, we'll have to wait till after, we gotta wait till after.
Maybe we'll look, and then we can bring that to council. That would be my recommendation, bring, what you say, Mr. Chairman, bring back the council then. That way we can get it all settled.
Okay, but in the meantime, we will need guidance on how much you would like to, to recommend for the foundation because you need to look at all.
I understand, that's what I'm saying, to give y'all some time and give us your time. We'll work on it.
The money y'all already have recommended, like, for a lot of the Queen of Fairs, the thing in Dulles, Lakeview, so, we'd like to go. Pass that so y'all can give us, those people attention on that money. It won't take too long for the Queen of Fairs and that kind of stuff. Or you think we have time to do it all?
Next month?
Yeah, we're doing this.
Next month.
Could I ask a question?
May I just interject one thing, Mr. Scott, in reference to this question? We've had part of the ventures, like lease parts of that property, Boys and Girls Club. And just today, I heard from Superintendent Rogers that some gentleman has applied for a grant to use part of that space for housing development or a housing unit for veterans. So that's news. I just got that call today. So there's a lot of interest showing to, like, use it, put it out there, and let other groups use parts of it or lease part of it or rent part of it? Yes.
So can I?
I just want to tell that to Mr. Scott. Thanks, sir.
The oversight committee that Bob's talking about, I just, I've looked for several different, over years, at things that get funded. And one of interest to me was, just for an example, the Taste of Dillon got like $7,000 or $8,000. And the Taste of Dillon, is my understanding, is more or less just for Dillon people. No tourism is involved with that, I don't believe, because this last one, it was my understanding that a lot of it was special invitation. And so there's a lot of things that are funded that I wonder what the oversight committee thinks of. And that's just one example I could, could point out, you know. As far as the foundation for the auditorium.
I have a whole council workshop on this one. We got plenty of time, which could be to y'all within the next week or so. And so we got a lot to bring to the day, and we can really.
I know we exceeded our time on that. Thank you. Thank you very much.
We have a motion up the line.
We had a motion.
There was a motion.
Yeah, we have a motion on.
I would love to, please, I don't want to make that motion.
Yes, sir. Any discussion? I'm the favorite right now. Okay, now we're down to 5D. And all the cemetery areas to the county cemetery area.
Mr. Chairman, can I just make one comment? Yeah, this is a cemetery that Melissa Thompson, I, who's my staff member, and I've been out and actually looked at. And it does qualify. We've notified, and you can tell by the graves on there, they make 20-year requirements based on, you know, that part of there too. And I don't think it would be a lot to maintain, so I mean, I don't think it'd be a small amount.
You can get an E on the real approach.
The property owners agreed to sign whatever equals there are to do it, you know, provided we put in the system.
We have a motion this afternoon, some of here.
I made a motion.
Any discussion? I'm the favorite right now. We're down to 5C of Bill, we ran the bar in Dillon County. Estevake material available right away to Estevake material. And I think everybody's got a picture that would be a bar field, I think it's about seven acres. Everybody's got it there, hand book there, located with, we need to be able to get sand on that part of the county. We have a motion of.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman. You have a motion?
Just a second?
Sure.
Any discussion? I'm the favorite right now. Okay, now we're down to 5D Recreation Center.
Okay, with your packets, you have one from the Dillon County branch in AAACP. It's hosting their annual Freedom Fund banquet, and this is their main fundraiser. And they would like for y'all to keep your support by them.
Get it on.
How we been doing in the past? Have we been buying this county lives on a table? So how's it been doing here?
You know, I don't, we never, we're not, we're a table, yeah.
What time is the table, Clay?
Yeah. County bought a table.
Take, county bought a table, let's, let's do that.
You want to buy a table?
Did we get a table this year, Clay?
I thought.
We have a motion to get a table of eight, I think, $250 donation for a table.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any discussion? I'm the favorite right now.
Okay, Mr. Criterion Club, they were asking for a donation of $3,000.
That's what the thing we were talking about a few minutes ago. I think we'll put all that on hold until we can get further understated and.
No, that's it.
Okay, down to number six, old business. Dillon County Bar Association Resolution. Here by the corner. I think, I think, I might be wrong, but I think everything y'all resolutions, we're doing that, is accurate.
You know what, I think you're right, Chairman. I appreciate you putting us on the agenda for today. And I did want to recognize members of the bar that are here today. Leary McKenzie, David Watson, Laurel Hayes, Jack McGuinness, Charles Curry, Rosalyn Sellers. Our clerk of court, Win Hyatt's here with us today. Alan Berry's not here with us, but he is one of us. And I don't believe that. He's here today also. What we did, we met before y'all on July the 22nd, and we told you at that time about a resolution the bar had passed. May I hand y'all up a copy of the resolution we passed?
Thank you, Bobby.
I think all was pretty well, we like to be doing, we're a great resolution.
I want y'all to pass a resolution that says the same thing. Would y'all please consider doing that? We've invested money in the courthouse as a county. We've got a beautiful building that's preserved and is useful and has not outlived its usefulness. A lot of us have invested money for offices around the courthouse. And I'd ask if you would please consider passing that as a county council resolution. We would sure appreciate it and appreciate your support in that regard.
You must agree to this today and then get our attorney to do a resolution. I hear you have to do a resolution up there.
Well, I've got a suggestion. This was drafted by about 14 lawyers. I would suggest that y'all adopt this resolution. It's short and sweet. It supports moving the general sessions to the judicial center. It opposes moving, moving common pleas. It opposes moving family court. And it supports keeping Win where she's at. And of course, letting her run the courthouse as she's supposed to do under the statute.
Do we have?
I'll make a motion.
Do you have a motion, though?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, before we vote on this, we can have a brief discussion. You know, I don't have a problem with this resolution. And I don't have a problem with what you're asking for. But the only thing I have a problem with, if it's going to cost a future outfit this, then I would certainly have a problem because we've already have a facility that should pretty much be state of the art, should be more secure, and is upfitted to have court in. Now, I ain't got a problem if y'all want to use the old courthouse, that's fine. But when it comes to spending more fun to, to give you better security.
But with all due respect, that's not before you today. We're not asking for.
Sir, I do understand.
And if we did, we'd have to come before you.
Yes, sir, I do understand that's not before me today. I'm very well aware of that. But I'm looking for the future, is what I'm talking about. If we already spent millions of dollars and we have to build a facility that's already up to date, that's up to standard, if you move back to that old facility and you come back before us asking for funding to do what we've already done, then certainly that, it wouldn't make sense.
Well, it wouldn't. But I want to see how you can get the cart before the horse. I think you've got to wait for that to happen.
I will tell you why I got the cart before the horse. The reason I got the cart before the horse, because that's an old building. These are old buildings. We got a new facility. That old facility at some point is going to need some new maintenance to it. And then next thing, you know, we got a letter from the Supreme Court saying that we got to change this, we got to change that, when we've already spent millions of dollars down there at that courthouse. If y'all want to use that courthouse, I ain't got no problem. And I will support your. If y'all want to use that courthouse, I ain't got no problem, and I will support your resolution, but just understand, when you come back trying to get it upfitted to fit you.
Be ready.
I just ain't going to be with you.
I'm with you, my friend.
I sure am.
Thank you, Councilor.
I have a question. What you going to do about what's going on out there now with the flooding and the, the door faces and all that stuff falling off of the new building, and there's not enough parking, that we're going to have to take some of the drawers, I think, just this week? And I had to park down at the other end of jail and walk, save me about two blocks.
We don't have the parking out there that we have around the street, around the courthouse.
Soon we have all that back in, back there too. You know, we've never had any parking for the drawers parking, but we have a problem out, out there. And, you know, we know it flooded, we know we, y'all had to buy more carpet. They even said the door facings and stuff are falling off the offices out there.
Well, that don't have anything to do with your job.
That's not there to keep them.
I don't think that have anything to do with your job. But what I, the question I want to ask is, when this project first came up, probably three, four years ago, we was talking about, they weren't talking, we didn't get in, talking about doing it. Why didn't somebody come forward then with?
That's the good question.
With this resolution, they said, we don't want to move out there.
Well, it.
Tell that council then, that we keep this building over.
Yes, sir. And that, like you said, I think that was before you were on council. The council, and I respect the former council and you fellows, but nobody involved the Dillon County Bar at all. We were not asked any questions about that courthouse.
Sure they have?
But I think we should have been involved. I think we should have been involved. I think just as common courtesy, plus I think since we worked it every day of our lives, that, that it would have been beneficial to whoever's making those decisions. But what was brought to our attention was that the sheriff was going to move down there, general sessions was going to move down there, and that was it, y'all. That's what we were hearing on the street and the solicitor's office. Later it changed to move the family court down there, and there was some rumor going around that y'all were going to move all court down there. And that's why we thought it was important to bring this resolution to you.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask, yes, we just tabled all this resolution, all, so we have our attorney all up to sit down and discuss and look at it. Y'all done that to me once, though.
Steve got a motion, you don't have a problem with that, do you? I mean.
I drafted this resolution.
You're the lawyer drafting the resolution, this before those.
Well, I, I'll tell you just to, this is, and people may have a different opinion about this, I, I think it may be okay to accept their resolution, but I think you really pass your own resolution if, if you're going to do that, just to make sure things are clean and that, that it's done properly. And I think we need to put the, the resolution that you all are going to vote on, on the agenda and, and provide a copy of it to cover it before it's voted on, just to make sure things are clean and tidy, but.
I think we need to know too also, with this, if we vote on, pass this resolution, would it cost taxpayers more money? I know it would save you guys some money because you said that, you're just close to the, but to keep this building operating like we doing now, this small plan, but of course that you said, how much, we need to know how much when it comes to taxpayers, because we, we down here now, we got this building, and.
I, I agree with Attorney Berry, whatever he said, I agree with him, whatever he wants, things we need to do. We, I think Dillon County spent a lot of money and that courthouse is thrown away.
We spent about three million dollars on the courthouse when they renovated, and then, and then we had to come back because there were problems with the roof, and we had to spend more money, and then there were problems with the heating and air conditioning system, we had to spend more money, and you spent probably pretty close to as much over that courthouse as you spent at the judicial center.
Ten years ago, I was probably spending another three, four, five meters.
The horses were killed out there.
Because of all the.
They gonna spend that and that one down there, too.
It's an old building.
We're going to have to put security in all of it down there like we might do out here.
We'll shut that down anyway.
You may be program, growing up, maybe next week, then following week, have a call.
I may be speaking.
You can't, you got a little short in this situation.
I may not, I'm not going to speak on that, but I think what they've asked for is to adopt their resolution. I think we can vote to accept that, but that, that doesn't mean it's a resolution from the county council. And if you decide to do one, then I'll draft one, and then you can vote on it next week if you decide to do that. I think it's certainly fine to accept their resolution.
I'll make a motion to accept their resolution.
I say.
I guess the motion been made, just a second, for discussion. All in favor, raise your hand.
What did he? What's the motion?
To accept their resolution.
To accept their resolution, not our own resolution.
Yeah, their own resolution.
Accepted, what did that mean?
Just right here.
I mean.
Just like, just like, he said, well, if we get an order from the Supreme Court of Justice, that we got to do a lot more security and changes over there, we're not buying it by this resolution.
Yeah, we accepted all of this, all of that that come along, they'll be able to keep this building operate over here like, like this says.
What this says is just they continue doing what they're doing.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we just put in a motion that we accept this resolution and a further study? How is that? Wouldn't that be, it ain't passed the vote yet.
But we haven't passed our own resolution, he's talking about drawing up something. But all this is saying, we agree to let them keep doing what they're doing right now.
I'll go along with that. We can change it later if we, if you see.
Well, he's going to draw up a resolution for us, and then you can vote on whether you want to pass it or not. We can look at it, we can push it, say.
We don't vote.
It's already been voted on.
They started getting voted for.
I had voted because I didn't know he was pushing it. I didn't know you brought it to a final vote.
You want to re-vote?
No, I'm going on with it, I'm going on.
We can change.
I would vote for it. I'd rather look at it again, than the versus what we're going to put together versus what they asking for. I think that's pretty much doing a balancing act, so to speak.
I think we ought to get another attorney besides, you know, Dillon County Attorney to draw up something.
So the resolution, I guess for the record, it passed five to two?
Five to two.
Thank you. I appreciate you, fellas. I'll, even you two. God bless you.
Chuck Talbot here, who is our outside CPA, he's also found us some, a copy of all this report, just while, while we're here, he also helped us prepare and all that. Chuck also headed this out, too, so, but anyway, I'll let Mr. Talbot tell you what he found out.
One minute, Mr. Young, excuse me, sir. Yes. Play, make that statement you made again, Mrs. Wyman is here, she helped prepare the audit of it, she helped prepare the books for.
She helped us prepare the books, you're right. Prepare the books. I just thought she'd be here if she needed anything.
Thanks, sir. How about treasure, Clay? She emailed, I know you told me earlier she would be here today.
She emailed and said she was sick, and she said she was, that's it, this is ill, that's going or something, I don't know. Said she got.
Well, Mr. Chairman, Councilman, I'm Chuck Talbot with Webster Rogers, and appreciate you having me here today to give our report with regard to your audit and financial statements. I'd like to also recognize Greg Ackerman. Greg's a manager with Vermin, supervises the field procedures of, of the audit. And Clay did mention Mrs. Wyman, Walda Wyman. Yes, you're exactly right, she's not part of the audit process. Walda, I guess is a one ways professional contract accountant to you. I mean, she assists in, in closing your books and drafting your financial statements that we audit as your professional auditors. Also, I'd ask Clay to pass out a letter. One of the things that we're asked to do on professional standards is communicate certain things to governing body as we wrap up our audit process, and we always do that in a formal letter. And so I'll cover a few things here. Basically, what it's saying is that we have completed the audit of your financial statements for the year ending June thirtieth of fifteen. Some of the significant accounting policies that, or all the significant accounting policies that the county adheres to are found in footnote one to the financial statements. It also mentions estimates here. Estimates are included in every set of financial statements. I can tell you it's a part of our audit procedures that we review those estimates, we look at the underlying assumptions, and we look at their application and how they're disclosed in financial statements, and we came to a conclusion, we concur with, with their application in the statements. One of the things also that is a, a significant new accounting, on page two, a significant new accounting standard that was implemented during this past fiscal year was GASTI sixty-eight, Government Accounting Standards Number Sixty-eight. And what's happened there, there's always the, the state retirement system, basically a regular retirement system, police retirement system that y'all participate in. Of course, that is, that liability, the state's liability has always been reflected there in the state retirement system. What's happened under this new accounting standard is that liability has been taken, and each entity who participates in those, in those plans are now reflecting their proportion of share of that liability on their books. And so there was a thirteen million, eight hundred and almost fifty thousand dollar adjustment to reflect your share, the county's share, of the state retirement system's liability now is reflected on their books. Now, nothing's changed operationally, you know, the county has continued to fund the retirement system under statute and regulations, et cetera, just like it always has, but there's a new accounting standard that says we're going to put this liability now on, you know, not just the county, the municipalities, the school districts, et cetera. Everyone is showing their share of liability. Being kind of skeptical, my thought is, well, that information's always been there, and they haven't been able to get the discussion to fund it, so maybe one way to do it is parcel it out to the grassroots level, and maybe we'll get more discussion about funding the liabilities. And I, again, I'm just being skeptical as to, as to why that, that's happening in, in the way it's reflected. I can tell you also, there were no, in terms of any, there were no uncorrected adjustments or anything that are not, everything's reflected here. Any year end adjusting entries and whatnot are all reflected in, in this document. This is another thing. We did assist in binding, and we certainly reviewed the draft as Ms. Wyman presented the draft and whatnot, and we, like I said, we assisted actually binding the document for you. But this is very much management's financial statements. And what we've been asked to do is come in professionally, independently, objectively, look at this document and indicate through our opinion, our opinion letter, that, yes, this truly reflects who you are financially. It tells the story of who you are for that year ending June thirty, fifteen, and where you stand, what, where with all you have and whatnot, under accounting standards. And, and that's what we've done, it's a clean opinion, and that's what you're looking for in terms of, in terms of your audit. With regard to it being management's financial statements, I do want you to know that formally, as a part of the audit process, we ask at management, management provides us a letter of representation, that, yes, this is their financial statement, that, yes, they have responded fully to all of our inquiries as we tested the numbers and whatnot, that, yes, they're not aware of any potential liabilities or disclosures that should be here that they haven't let us, as your auditors, know about. So they formally take responsibility for this document, and I think that's important for you to know. Another thing that management does is ask your attorneys, your, your legal counsel, to respond directly to us, as your auditors, with regard to any potential liability that should be recorded here that potentially is not recorded here. And so that's been done as well. So that's two very important pieces of the puzzle left, and the procedures we go through that I think you need to be informed about. Now, let me, just to give you an idea, and again, I, I'd like to focus on the process because, I mean, this is really the last fiscal year, you're well within to the new fiscal year, so this is important, but you need, the focus is really on the audit process and, and that it is a clean opinion. But I do want to just look at the table of contents to give you an idea of what's in Our report on the financial statements is on page three through five, and as I said, that is an unmodified, a clean opinion, that's what you're looking for. The basic financial statements are found on page six through thirty-four, and that includes the footnotes. And then a lot of new data is here about that retirement plan obligation that I mentioned that you, you reflected your proportion share. And that's part of the required supplemental information. So that's some new data that you might see, you hadn't seen before. So you need to, if you're glancing through this compared to prior year, you might want to know that. Also, I want you to know that we issued two other reports as a part of this, and that's down in the regulatory section. We give you two reports with regard to internal controls and compliance. Again, that's under professional governmental standards that we do that. With regard to your federal programs, we actually look at your major federal programs and compliance test those, and we give an opinion. I mean, it is, you know, just like a clean opinion on your financials. We looked at those two major programs and compliance tested those programs that you were administering those federal funds in accordance with their regulations. So that's also part of it. Finally, I do want to just look at one schedule, and it is on page thirty-five through thirty-seven. I find that councils sometimes like to, particularly look at this doc, this schedule, page thirty-five through thirty-seven. And I know soon you'll be going into your budget season, and you'll have fiscal year that you're currently in, this, that financial data to look at, but you'll also have, in a summary way, right here, the general fund that you'll be looking for a budget for FY, I guess seventeen, here's the line item documentation for FY fifteen. And again, what you have, just to orient you, across the top, you have the budgeted, original, and final, and those did not change, you have the actual amounts that, that were incurred, and then you have a variance column. And then, on the left side, from top to bottom, you have your revenues there, your expenditures, and as you come on over to page thirty-six, and that continues on thirty-six and all the way to thirty-seven, and you come down to the bottom line on page thirty-seven, and you can see that you had budgeted going into your fund balance, and you actually did go into your. and you actually did go into your fund balance by $2,638,000. But that actually was a positive variance to what you had planned for in the budget. So you ended up really about where you anticipated the year for 15. Again, I just find councils find this is a good source as you're going through the year. I'll be glad to entertain any questions about the audit or process, sir.
Your name is, sir?
Chuck Talbert.
Mr. Talbert, sir. Good afternoon. Let's ask you about three questions and I'll leave you. Talk to me a little bit about sampling when you come to Dillon County. How do you gather your information? Is it pre-pool for you or do you come in and you pull out of a pool or does someone already have the information they presented? Because you're sampling, I understand you're sampling.
Right.
I understand you're not giving out.
In fact, our opinion says that, you know, it provides reasonable assurance and I mentioned reporting on controls. The reason we look at controls is to determine what procedures that we must, that we might perform in order to give you our opinion. So we're not looking at every transaction. You're exactly right. We do sufficient work under professional standards to determine, you know, that we can give you that opinion. So if you're looking at a population of payroll, for example, we would then make judgmental selections of X number of payroll participants. And from that, we would select, I don't know, 25 to 40 or 50 individuals and we would look at those just to confirm that those balances, those transactions materially reflect that.
Could I catch you again? I think you ran off from here. Let me see, can I catch you again here? Simple answer, sir. Do you pull from the pool or is it given you? Do you pull in and pull from the documents?
Yeah, I'll answer that.
Sir, I want a simple answer. I know you're telling them I came out of Harvard and all this. I want a simple answer.
Yes, sir.
Do you guys pull from a pool or when you get to Dillon County, somebody hands you some documents?
No, sir. We ask them for a list of all transactions for a certain area, depending on which one we're looking at. We say we need a list. They provide us that list and show us how that list ties into the numbers that you're looking at here. So if it's a payroll number, I need a list of all your payroll transactions and I need to see how that list ties into the numbers you're looking at there. From that list of detailed transactions, I determine, or we determine, how many we need to see from a sample perspective. A lot of times it's a 25 because it's just a statistical sample. From that 25, I go through and say, I want to see this one, this one, this one. I pull the sample, independent of anyone in Dillon County or Ms. Wildman or anyone. I send that list of, okay, these are the 25 I need to see and they pull that information, the backup documentation for that information for me. But they do not control or even know which ones I will pull. That's part of our procedures and one of the things we have to do on an annual basis is have a level of unpredictability. It's written into our standards. So we are required to have that sample pulled based on our statistical sampling and our selections. We are not allowed to let anyone else pull those amounts. They pull the backup documentation based on the sample we choose, independently of anyone in Dillon County.
Thank you, sir.
That got you? Yes, sir.
One more question, sir, quickly. What type of accounting system Dillon County uses? What type of accounting system is Dillon County using?
CSI.
CSI.
Can you explain that a little further? Is it like unit, government unit counters where CSI, you have a different account?
And actually, I don't think it's called CSI anymore. It's run by Smith Data McMartinberg.
Yeah, I know, they've changed the name.
Yeah, and I can't remember.
I mean, that's your accounting software.
Yeah, it's a.
Is that what you're referring to?
What does, sir, can you explain that software to me? Can y'all explain that software to me? Does that software divide out different accounts or where you can easily locate your funding?
It's fund accounting. It uses fund.
Say that word again.
Fund account.
You made A in my class.
Yes, sir.
Last question, sir, last question. Last question would be, could you say, sir, could you actually say that the financial statements in Dillon County are free of any material misstatements? Can you actually say that? Or, and I read your document earlier when I came in and I could understand. Could you, are you for sure? Or you say what you've been saying all the time, you're just giving your opinion? Are you sure that Dillon County's finance documents has no misrepresentation? Or you're just giving a clear opinion? That's all I need to know. Are you sure? Can you be sure? Or you're just going, you're just giving your opinion here?
I'm not sure what the difference is, but I mean, our professional.
Sure means you absolutely show opinion, I think. Or maybe, yes, there's no, there's no misrepresentation.
There is no fail-safe absolute, okay? There is no fail-safe absolute.
You're playing dodgeball.
So I may be playing dodgeball. That's what you say.
Thank you, sir. That's good. No, ma'am, I'm fine, I'm fine. You can move on, Mr. Chairman. And move on.
Any more questions?
I can explain some of it.
That's all.
I got a question. Mr. Talbert?
Yes.
When you come in and you need to see the financial records, do you actually, you see a generated report or do you see the bank reports? Like the bank statements and that kind of stuff?
Both.
Both?
Yes. I mean, your system generates reports.
I understand.
And sure, we look at the source documents, including the bank statements.
Would you say that our finance director ought to have access on his computer to those documents versus the bank?
It's.
I mean, him as the finance director ought to be able to go in there and, you know, look at, see what accounts is from the bank, not just the generated report.
I'm not sure why he has access to it.
He don't have it. You know what I'm saying? He don't have it. He, you know. Only two people got access to the bank statements, the county administrator and the county treasurer. You know, the finance director don't have it, I mean. And he could do a good job if we just train him loose.
I don't know, but I see why.
Wait a minute, Clay, wait, let's get to here now.
He's got access to it.
Well, as of Thursday evening, when me and you, wait a minute, wait a minute. When me and you and Richard sent his office, he told you he didn't have everything. He can't see the deposits coming and that kind of stuff. And you agreed and you said, I'm going to talk to Jamie about it.
And if he had the bank statements all that time, they'd come up then why wouldn't you get it to him to get it up?
You don't have the bank statements, but you haven't access to the computer versus the bank statements are two completely separate.
You're telling me, Richard Ginn can go back and pull up First Citizen's online banking?
No, that's a different situation what you're. I'm not going to get into trying to get to the split here, but I mean, it's, the computer systems, like you said, one is runs the county system. The bank statements are totally separate and they come from the bank. They don't come from our computer.
Clay, well, how can either the finance director come to us and tell us what we need to make decisions on? And he don't know what we got ready, except for generated report. It might be a month behind. Two months ago, we got a budget report. The treasurer hadn't even keyed in the salary for the whole month because she won't turn the payrolls to nobody. I mean, that was over a month behind. It was blank, the whole line was blank.
Well, Robert Liston, that's that attorney look into it. If we legally can, can do that, look at this, if we legally can do it.
Mr. Bud, you guys are more about to be in possession.
We're a bit of a possession.
I'd like to point out, I mean, if you would return, go to my, to our letter of opinion. I don't want, that's exactly, that's professionally what it's called. It's called a letter of opinion. Exactly. And let me, let me just point out, we have, we have issued our report. The second paragraph of that report is, it captured management's responsibility for financial statements. The management is responsible for the fair presentation of statements under accounting standards and that includes the design, implementation and maintenance of internal control relevant to the preparation of these financial statements. Our responsibility, your professional auditors, is to provide an opinion under professional standards that these statements are materially correct. Not absolute, materially correct. The question is, this is a picture of who you are financially and we're saying professionally, yes, you can rely on this picture as a story of who you are financially. That is our professional responsibility. So.
I think that's a good language.
That's all I'm asking. It's right here in our report.
How can seven council make decisions and the finance director, and he don't know what about what we got in the camp? No. Yeah, I mean, I guess I have a problem. We can make that go on, you know.
Ma'am, do you have anything to say? I was going to let you speak if you had something to say.
I was just going to say that the county pays me to assemble a lot of documentation that these gentlemen get to conduct their audit. I use the general ledger, the software whose name we can't remember. I pull a trial balance from that. I assemble, and if you look at page six on your statement of net position, there's a long list of assets that the county has and liabilities that the county has. I provide schedules, I prepare schedules between the general ledger software, the receivable software that's used for the landfill and other types of, you know, receipting procedures that the treasurer uses, the bank reconciliations, the bank account statements. I make a big, actually now it's a PDF file, it used to be a book of all of the documentation that they use to do their initial analysis before they begin their sampling. So there's more than just bank statements and there's more than just a computer system that grinds out records that you would look at on a monthly basis. And the fin, or the treasurer's office reconciles those checking accounts every month and gets the transactions into the general ledger software from which you make your monthly decisions. But it's not uncommon for local governments to go for several months without, of the formality of this. It's a lot of work to produce a set, unfortunately. And I'm not saying it's right, but it's a lot of hours to do this. You paying a lot of money because it's a big job. So.
I agree, we don't have a lot of payroll. Everything else is up to date when we get it in the back. When it pays higher, they automatically. But payroll, the treasurer will not let nobody do it for her. And she don't, I mean, they keyed in back here, but we got a report where she hadn't even put in for the whole month that we had no payroll. You know.
And my question would be to you ladies, just like in someone's home. People run budgets all the time, but if you don't keep checks and balances on the money that you have, then you know, you're going to overspend or you're going to be, you're going to be in a financial deficit. I mean, that's just, I mean, that's simple. I mean, accounting, I understand some wording probably is over some of our head. But when I studied this thing three nights ago, it's simple. You know, we need checks and balances here. We the government body at the county, we spend the taxpayer dollars and ma'am, we don't even know how much money that we have in the bank. We never look at those documents. How do we know what's there? How do we know what was removed? How do we know? Just tell us, how do we know? And we pay these people to come in and help us understand that. And I understand their opinion and I understand they have to give their opinion. But this is where we are at, that's what I'm saying.
One of the, one of the functions of monthly bookkeeping, which is what you're really more concerned about, not audited financial statements, is providing monthly financial reports. There are procedures in place in this county to at least make sure that the cash transactions are correct. They can't generate payroll checks here without having it go through a posting routine.
Right. Can I cut you off a minute? We understand, we've seen, I've been here going on nine years. I've seen numerous of generated reports, but I have not yet had an opportunity to look at a bank statement that was backup those generation reports, those generated reports. And when I ask for one, it's like I have committed an unforgivable sin.
Well, there are several issues here and I know this is a ongoing controversy. But a bank, a bank statement simply is not something that provides adequate financial information for you to use in a decision-making process.
So you're saying the First Citizen Bank, if that's the bank we use, which I don't know which one we use, if they give me a bank statement, you're telling me that that bank statement is not liable, that bank is just, it's just not accurate?
I'm not saying the bank statement is.
But that's basically what, sir, let me just be clear. That's basically what you're telling me. Now, if I go to the bank, if I go to my bank account today and they tell me I got 2,000 miles in the bank, I better have 2,000 miles in the bank.
But there is so much money that goes through the First Citizen's account. And what you need as a decision-maker is to know how many checks are outstanding that haven't cleared, how many deposits might be out there. And simply having a bank statement for a decision-making process is not complete information.
That's why we got a finance man there, he's not able to see that information. He's not even able to see it, he's our finance man. Ma'am, let me tell you something. I'm going to say this, I'm going to quit and I'm going to leave it alone. I'm only here for 18 years. Probably investigated for six years. Anytime you start asking somebody for information and you start meeting these brick walls, there's a red flag coming from where. And I'm going to the bathroom.
Any more questions?
We thank you. We do appreciate you allowing us to serve in this passage of your audit.
Thanks.
I will say one final thing though, and I, really, the general ledger, the reports from the general ledger reflect all of your transactions. The bank statement is behind the curve. I mean, yeah, there's the bank statement there, but there's outstanding checks. There's outstanding deposits. So the reporting that comes out of the system is really what you need to perform, to provide good decisions.
The general ledger ain't accurate. If they kept up, because somebody keyed in, what are you going to do then? But they ain't accurate.
Well, there, certainly there needs to be procedures for monthly accounting and reporting. Yeah, I, you know.
I mean, we got a report, like I say, I'll be back in October. There was no payroll and I think for two weeks our payroll, Mr. Ginn, done what, $305,000. So if you figure $600,000, you know, we didn't have a record of. We just hope Mr. Ginn's has more responsibilities because he can do a great job.